Studying English doesn't have to be uncomfortable or take hours and hours out of your day. In today's forty-five-minute cozy English study session, we're going to cover all areas of English, including
Speaking, reading, writing, vocabulary, grammar, and listening.
in a comprehensive and integrated way to help you reach your English goals. Are you ready? Let's go. You know the drill. Let's first talk about what you're going to need for today's English study session. You know how it goes. The first thing you're going to need is some kind of fun reading material. Today, I decided to step out of my comfort zone, which is usually fantasy or contemporary fiction. And I picked out the classical literature book, Moby Dick. One of the really awesome things about reading more classical literature is they're often available for free legally on the website Project Gutenberg. So that's where I got my copy today. If you would like to read Moby Dick along with me, I've included the link to it on the Project Gutenberg website, along with a link for an EPUB to PDF converter, if you would like to download it as a PDF version. I generally prefer using a PDF for this kind of reading practice activity because I can draw on the page and highlight it. However, you can download the Kindle application for free across all of your devices. So that way, you don't have to worry about converting it and having to take that extra step. And I'll be honest, I do prefer reading books on my Kindle because I find it to be gentler on my eyes. But for the purpose of today's video, I am just going to use my tablet because that way I can show you what I'm doing on the screen. So again, a link to that free download and the PDF converter will be available in the description box. The second thing you're going to need today will be a comfy cozy place to study because we want to try and inject as much pleasantness into our study sessions since sometimes studying might not always be the most enjoyable thing. And the final thing that you definitely need will be something to write in for our vocabulary section and our integrated vocabulary grammar writing section. I also highly recommend downloading the free reading recommendation guide, which gives you over forty book recommendations that will hopefully help you find something that you enjoy. I'll also be using the Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide today, which is available to purchase on Amazon, or you can download it on my website. It isn't necessary, but it is a really nice way to organize and track all of your vocabulary practice throughout the year. I also recommend checking out the My Three Sixty-Five Day Writing Journey. I'm going to be using it today in our integrated writing vocabulary grammar section. And this is available in a hardcover or paperback on Amazon. And it's also available to download on CammiesEnglishCorner.com. And while you're there, you might as well also download my free weekly study planner to help you track all of your English progress throughout the year and get even more tips and tricks for how to easily integrate English practice into your everyday life. And finally, because this is a somewhat longer English study session, definitely get yourself some snacks or something to drink. But before we dive into today's English study session, make sure to like and subscribe and click that bell icon so you can get notified every time I post a video. But don't forget that these English study session videos have been structured so that you can come back to them again and again and use them as a resource to help you along your English learning journey. So without further ado, let's get studying. And we're back in our favorite cozy spot. Different background, but same chair. And hopefully, the video quality and sound will be better than when we tried this last time in Study Session, Episode Three. So fingers crossed that everything will go well. Before we jump into reading, did you make sure to grab yourself a yummy snack or a tasty drink? Because we're heading into spring and the weather is warming up here in Arkansas, I decided to go for something a little more cool and refreshing today. So I'm gonna try out this lemon lime sparkling water. Let's see how it sounds. Ooh, doesn't that sound good? Let's see how it tastes. It's fine. Hmm, not my favorite, but it'll do. So like I mentioned in the intro, today I'll be reading the classic novel, Moby Dick. What are you going to be reading today? So as we're doing our reading today, I want you to be picking out all different vocabulary words from your reading material. And those are the words that we're going to use today in our vocabulary practice. So I know in the past few study sessions, I haven't shared my reading material on the side of the screen. And that's because it wasn't really appropriate for all audiences. But today, because I'll be reading more classical literature that is suitable for all audiences, you will get to see it on the side of the page just to see how quickly I'm reading and to see which words I'm highlighting to potentially use in the vocab section. Okay, let me just get to Chapter One. Oh my goodness, there are, there are so many chapters. I don't know if this is necessarily a long book, but holy crap, there are a hundred and thirty-five chapters plus an epilogue? That's a bit daunting, but you know what? We're gonna give it a go. We won't let that many chapters scare us away.
Still going, where's chapter one? Do, 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 do. Where, where, where is it? Nope. Nope, not that.
Oh, finally found chapter one looming. Sounds intriguing. Ready to start reading? Fifteen minutes, let's go. So even though I did find this reading excerpt to be a little difficult to follow along with, I did really like how vivid the imagery was. Not only did the author give very specific details about how the temperature felt and the cool breezes and the salty smell of the seaside air, I also thought that the metaphors were quite creative. What about you? What was your favorite thing that you read today? Either your favorite part of the story or something else that you enjoyed? Or if you didn't find anything interesting, tell me why. Now it's time to pick out those five words from our reading material to use in our vocabulary section. So even though I highlighted so many words, I'm going to try and pick out some words that seem more useful for daily conversation. And I also really want to try and pick out words that will maybe be more neutral to positive because as you've seen in the other study sessions, I always end up picking out these words that are negative. And it's really hard to fit them into the writing section where we generally talk about positive things. So that's gonna be my challenge right now is finding some happy or at least neutral vocab. Okay, so I picked out the words mazy, infallible, idolatrous? I have to check the pronunciation on that one. Urbane and perdition, not petition, which my brain keeps wanting to say perdition. So I have heard infallible before, but I honestly always forget what it means. I haven't heard idolatrous, so I'm really interested in that. And the other words were used as adjectives to describe some more positive scenery type things. So I feel like they'll be useful in our writing section later in today's study session. We'll see. So before we get started, tell me, what words did you pick out for today? Awesome. So let's get into our vocabulary section. Are you ready? Ten minutes, let's go. Awesome. So let's get into our vocabulary section. Are you ready? 10 minutes. Let's go. Okay. That's it for our vocabulary section. How'd it go? Were you able to finish in time and have enough time to review your new words? So like I thought, most of my words were adjectives. But my final word is about as negative as it gets because perdition apparently means eternal damnation or hell. So I wasn't really expecting that much negativity from any of my words. But you'll notice that I did go ahead and add this little bit extra with these small graphs. So what I did was I looked up how popular these words are or how much they're kind of trending, I guess you could say. So if we look at mazy, it was a very commonly used word back in like the 1800s. Then it dropped down, but it is coming up a little bit these days. And then infallible used to be very common, but now not so much. Idolatrous. I looked up the pronunciation. Not popular anymore at all. However, urbane is becoming quite popular. So as you're reviewing your vocabulary and looking up the definitions, I do highly, highly recommend checking how popular or commonly used the words are. Because if it's something that's really uncommon, maybe it's not really worth wasting your time and brain space trying to super study it. So my recommendation is if you find a word that's kind of like these ones that are not used very frequently these days, maybe try to pick out some other words from your reading materials and check to see if they're trending. For some extra speaking practice, go ahead and read out loud your words and their definitions. Now it's time to take that vocabulary and combine it with grammar and writing for our final integrated writing section. So since I read Moby Dick today, which is all about a man going on an adventure, we are going to use the March 28th prompt in the My 365 Day Writing Journey, all about choosing your own adventure. So today's topic is this. Discuss the role of travel blogs and social media in influencing your travel decisions. So basically, do you ever use social media to help you decide where you want to go and what you want to do on vacation? So a few grammar points to keep in mind. You do need to use present tense to describe how social media impacts your decisions because it's a general truth or almost like your habit, what you commonly do. However, you will then switch to past tense to discuss any previous travel decisions that you made based off of social media. And of course, make sure to include as many details as possible, such as any particular bloggers or influencers that you trust for travel advice and any details about their recommendations that you followed. And as always, I challenge you to use as many of your vocabulary words as possible in today's writing practice. Now, if you don't have the My 365 Day Writing Journey, that's totally fine. I'll have the prompt on the screen so you can still follow along. But if you do have the book and you've already completed this entry, or if this isn't your first time watching this video, I still want you to follow that first part of the prompt about how social media influences your travel decisions. However, instead of writing in past tense about previous experience, I want you to write in future tense about places that you plan on going to. Or you can write about places that you would like to go in the future. That way you can practice using that first and second conditional. Okeydoke, final section. 15 minutes of writing. Let's go. Okay, you finished. Great job. So how'd it go? Were you able to include most or all of your vocabulary words? So what places have you visited based on advice from social media influencers? Make sure to use the present perfect tense of "I have visited." Who do you generally trust the most for advice? I'll be honest, I don't think I've ever followed any influencers' advice for specific travel destinations. Travel influencers didn't really become popular until I had moved to South Korea in 2013. And at that time, most of my salary went towards paying off my university student loans, so couldn't afford to travel very much there. And then we had to save up money for our big move back to the United States. So I didn't really make the effort to try and follow any travel influencers. And on top of that, they always seem to go on such lavish and expensive luxurious vacations. And that's one, not really my preference. And two, I don't think I could ever afford flying first class or going to exotic resorts. So in general, I just don't really follow very many travel influencers. However, since we moved to Arkansas, I have found quite a few local influencer, like nature guides that show all different beautiful places to hike throughout the state. So I have started following them and I did take their advice a few times for some lovely hikes last year. And I'm so excited for my big dog to finally recover from his hip replacement surgery so that we can go on even more hikes this spring and summer. For our final speaking practice, go ahead and read your journal entry out loud, focusing on clear pronunciation and enunciation. So if you're working in your My 365 Day Writing Journey, make sure to check off that you did your writing. We practiced listening when you listened to me, reading. Of course, we did that at the beginning of today's study session. And speaking, because you've been talking throughout the whole session. And let's head on over to that free weekly study planner to check off our progress. So again, we did that reading at the beginning of our session. You listened to me ramble on about my book and about travel influencers. You've been speaking throughout the whole study session. Good job. We practiced our vocabulary. We integrated grammar into our writing section. And of course, we just did our writing section. And don't forget to check off your progress in the yearly tracker so that by the end of the year, you can see how awesome you are. And if you're looking for some more ways to integrate English into your daily life, definitely check out all my different tips and tricks here for how to create your own English immersive experience. And if you'd like some more resources, here's a whole page of links for you to check out. I totally understand if you have to get going, but if you have a bit more time, definitely check out my most recent video right over here. And I think you'll really enjoy this one over here. Happy studying and I'll see you later.